Okay. I'd like to call the March 19th Regular Council Meeting to order. Shannon, please call the roll.
Mr. Steele?
Here.
Ms. McPherson?
Here.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Here.
Mr. Scafidi?
Here.
Mr. Barr?
Here.
Mr. Fury?
Here.
Mr. Bellin?
Here.
Okay. Please join Mr. Fury in the invocation of the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us encourage, engage in a meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nature the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that affect all the residents and our businesses and our dedicated city employees. Bless those away from us serving and protect our country. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the March 12th meeting. Everybody get a chance to look at them?
Yes.
Okay. Any additions, corrections, anything? Can I make a motion? We approve the minutes from the March 12th meeting. Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Scafidi, second. Shannon, please call the roll.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Okay. Next on the agenda is audience participation. Before we start, Shannon's got the little timer to keep people to the five-minute limit, okay? And please remember, you're supposed to address your remarks to council, not to individual council members or the mayor. Thank you.
First, we have Bob Deuce.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Bob Deuce, 2229 Demme Drive in Meadowwood Plan. Several over two years ago, when we were considering the Golf Bank Center, I warned you, the council and mayor, about expending money that you didn't have. I pointed out how you have a history of spending $2 to $4 million a year over what you take in. As a former Director of Operations who was tasked with saving multiple companies, I told you that what you should be looking at is reduction in city employees. Your response, as mayor and council, was to spend $7 million plus on a clubhouse, hire three to five permanent restaurant employees, and scads of temps. Now, I hear the mayor saying that it may come to layoffs at the city. I guess I was right. Knowing how you're operating and assuming the regime has returned after the election, let me give you the next prediction. There will be no layoffs. That's all lip service. However, there will be a submission for a 1/2 percent income tax increase to be put on the ballot. Additionally, there will be an increase in the inside millage for targeted tax increases for police and fire pensions. And in addition to that, you will pass that particular measure without a vote of the citizenry. The city fees will continue to go up on everything. Remember, we are the lowest in all the surrounding areas, according to what I hear from you. Garbage fees will be instituted. Fees for sewage will continue to go up. The fitness center and golf courses' fees will rise, they have to, to start offsetting some of the losses. As a result, some Twinsburg seniors who are right now in this community living on a fixed income will start to move out of Twinsburg. But here's the real kicker. The businesses in Twinsburg will be watching you like a hawk. You have done nothing to encourage the GEs, the Rockwells, the QSRs, and all the other manufacturing organizations to stay here, except provide consistently lower taxes. Now, when the taxes go up and they see no end in sight, they will be looking at Macedonia, Aurora, Solon, Reminderville, Glen Willow to relocate. And why not? They will get a tax break for years from these areas and a promise of a more stable political environment. Now, the revenue loss will not be just the single families of the retired people. It'll be, you'll continue to lose large chunks of tax revenue, more empty offices, and have more empty warehouses. And then to fill these places, you'll need to provide a significant tax break for anyone coming in. Overall, it's a loss of tax revenue. It's a dreary and disastrous picture that I hate to paint. It is almost a page out of the East Cleveland financial story. Hopefully, you will wise up before it's too late. Secondly, I want to make a comment that I referred to earlier. As council and mayor, you have fiduciary responsibilities to the people of this community. Somebody rebutted my comment about Liberty Park because it was voted in as a tax increase to cover it. But it was voted in as a tax increase as an $11 million expenditure for 900 acres. It wasn't, it would have never passed if it was $19 million for less than 100 acres. So now, mayor and council, you can go on a diet tribe about me after I sit down and can't defend myself. Thank you.
Next, we have Lauren Senstock.
What's the other 100 acres for 200? I don't know.
Lauren Senstock, 2704 Arbor Glen Drive. I've been before council this time of year. I tend to be here quite often because it's budget season. Being a former finance director, I tend to look at things a little closer there as a citizen auditor. And at last week's meeting, the mayor basically said that he was short on solutions or recommendations. So tonight, I've prepared a rather lengthy document, deal specifically with just the general fund of the city from 2008 to 2017, which are the years in which the audits of the financial reports have been completed. And in reviewing them and looking at the city's position in cash in the general fund, which as we all know is the fund that can basically be used anywhere with other funds to basically support them and/or pull them out of the fire, at the end of 2017, it still had a reasonable amount of cash here in the general fund of $11 million. But as of the end of 2019, we're looking at $4.61 million, according to the finance director, what I read in the paper. So here's some recommendations. And one, I will say, having been involved in government most of my life in the accounting area, that fiscal discipline is seldom admired or acknowledged by the public. I acknowledge you guys have a really hard job to do up here. But the lack of fiscal discipline results in unmeasurable harm to the fiscal credibility with your taxpayers, and it takes years to overcome. I've been in communities that are going to have been through exactly where you're heading. You're getting four notice and half for many, many years. Now for recommendations. And you guys, I gave documents to Shannon, she can give them to you, or you can get them off of my website at www.citizenauditorohio.com. This is informational, but here's a recommendation. First one, I'd like to say a minimum fund balance policy would address and establish a budgetary methodology that would reveal and avoid continuous deficit spending by providing financial risk assessment along with guidelines for balancing the budget and proposing changes required to future revenues and/or taxation policies. This policy has been recommended for more than five years by me. Matter of fact, in 2014, I even mentioned it to the Charter Review Commission. Second, the mayor and city council need to address fiscal sustainable operating needs for all essential and non-essential program services in order to address deficit spending and avoid potential structural fiscal imbalances. These are a lot of real big terms, but basically, you need to balance your budget, and any continuous deficit spending puts you in any community in the position you are today. Your money is gone. Your flexibility and things you've done in the past will no longer be options to you. You're going to make decisions in the future that are not going to be very cost-effective for the city because you're not going to have the cash to do anything about it. The second one that I look at here is that the mayor and city council should do that, but I would also say that the recommendation is for a performance audit of all the city departments, not just fire and police and the parks and rec. I know that the service and some other departments were done back in 2005, but 14 years is a long time, and I think the state might give you a reduced rate if you went on doing all your departments. And I think that that should be done every 10 years, or anytime you have an election of a new mayor. And the reason you do that is it would provide an independent guide for sustainable staffing levels and negotiated spending priorities between council and the mayor. I mean, we all acknowledge in this city that we have a strong mayor form of government, and you need to have some abilities to place those priorities on that spending. Third one is the city of Twinsburg should prepare a five-year budgetary forecast to demonstrate fiscal responsibility and accountability, which has been recommended for more than five years, and the state auditor has recommended this for many, many years for municipalities. It is historically demonstrated, it is a historically demonstrated method of financial forecasting that can aid in predicting future fiscal imbalances and allow gradual increases or decreases in program expenditures. The fourth one is, is that the city needs to address its options on how to maintain and utilize the Glen Eagle Golf Course Clubhouse. Given the long-term debt of $6.2 million currently and financial issues revolving around the substantial general fund transfers currently being used to sustain the golf course fund operations, that again primarily due to the restaurant, bar, and banker facilities, the fiscal drain on the general fund resources is expediting the fiscal crisis to the general fund by using monies out there.
Mr. Senstock.
Okay. I'm sorry. Five minutes on. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Those are my points, and you can study this as much as you want. Call me with questions.
There's no more.
There is no more? Okay, great. Next is the council communication committee reports. Mr. Bellin?
Good evening. I hope everyone had a happy and safe St. Patrick's Day. None of my committees have met since last week. The next ARB meeting will be held on Thursday, March 21st, 6:00 PM, right here in council chambers. The golf advisory board meeting originally scheduled for this evening was canceled. The next golf advisory board meeting will be held on Tuesday, May 21st, 6:30 PM, also here in council chambers. Nothing for this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Scafidi?
Thank you. Good evening. I really have no committee reports tonight, but I do have one communication that I'd like to throw out there. I just want to give a thank you to Dennis Cabala in the building department. About three and a half years ago, I had a resident on Bell Meadow approach me, and we've been talking about these double poles. Well, he had a double pole at the end of his driveway, and it's been there for years. They put up a new pole, a new utility pole, and the old pole just remained there with just, I believe it was the foam wires on it, the Ohio Edison had taken theirs off. So it stayed there, and it was a concern of his, again, three and a half years ago. I called Dennis Cabala, and I've been really a thorn in his side for three and a half years, and I just want to thank him for putting up with me. But also, in turn, Dennis, as he coordinates a lot of our utilities, he's been in touch with the utility companies, and he's really stepped it up a little bit this past year, and we finally got, we finally got some response from them. And I'm just happy to report, finally, he called me the other day, he couldn't wait to give me a call, and tell me that that pole had been taken out on Bell Meadow along with several others in Glenwood Acres that have been there and we've been trying to get rid of. So, you know, three and a half years is a long time, and I know that sometimes, you know, the residents don't understand, you know, what we're doing or why it takes us so long, but truly, it's not us. We've been on them, and they're public utilities, and we try to work with them. We try to, we give them the heads up, and they kind of work at their own speed. It seems like last year, I believe it was Mr. Fury's suggestion, we had the representative come in and talk with us from Ohio, I think it was from Ohio Edison? Yeah. Oh, from Windstream, at the roundabout, because we had a pole that was cut off and hanging in the air for just about a year since that thing opened. And so it wasn't until then that he came, the representative, came in here, and we were able to have that, that piece of that pole taken out. And so we've been diligent on that ever since. Probably about a month ago, I requested the same thing. I requested the representative to come in and talk with us and, you know, do the same thing, and because this has been going on, and I'm not going to go on about this much more, but I just want to thank Dennis for his patience with me, and I appreciate all that he did, and I just appreciate, now, it seems like the program's hitting the road here in Twinsburg, and we should be removing all these poles that, they're unsightly, number one, and I know they're annoyances to the residents as well. Other than that, I have no other report tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Fury?
Good evening. Earlier this evening, the Tax Incentive Review Board met. It's a committee that's based with the county, the school system, the city, our economic development coordinator, and a resident to review CRA agreements, which are community reinvestment agreements, where if you build a building or add on to an existing building, we'll negotiate a decrease in the property tax for a certain period of time with the promise and monitoring of additional revenue through new employees. We also have top agreements, where we have existing buildings that are open, where somebody, it's a Twinsburg occupancy program, where we'll negotiate a discount on new payrolls for a certain period of time for income tax. We have nine CRA agreements, 10 top agreements, and all but two of them were renewed. We have a few that'll be modified if things don't change in a year, but this represents almost $1.8 million in income tax to the city of Twinsburg regarding these pretty large companies and large investments in the community. So these tools work. We've done more of these in the last few years, and we'll continue to do them to make sure that we get additional revenues for the city. The CIC will meet on April 11th at City Hall. The CIC's website, which has videos and interactions and explains exactly what we're doing, is fully up and running. And lastly, we have a finance meeting on April 25th at 6:00 PM before the council meeting. And that's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Barr?
Thank you. Good evening. The only committee that has met since our last meeting a week ago was the Planning Commission, and that was last night here in council chambers. The items that were up for approval were the final site plan for Good Shepherd Church, 9571 Shepherd Road. The Planning Commission did make recommendation and approve the final site plan based on some changes that had been recommended and that Good Shepherd had taken care of, including a shared parking agreement with the Masonic Lodge next door, and fulfilling some storm weather, stormwater retention requirements with city engineering. The, one of the other items up for discussion was the rezoning, specifically the northeast corner of Glenwood and Darrell Road, and there was discussion amongst the members regarding mixed-use facility and/or in R5 district. The Planning Commission did take a vote last night. There were four members there, and it was split with two opting for mixed-use and two preferring R5. So I'm sure that we will be discussing that more in the future. Lynn Muter from the city planning, again, sat down with us and discussed the small cell guideline regulations. And basically, what these are are the new 5G wireless towers that we're going, they're almost like a micro cell towers that we are all inevitably going to start seeing all over. The state of Ohio has put some guidelines into place that basically limits the authority of any municipality to prevent or restrict the installation thereof. There are some design guidelines. Lynn has done a wonderful job working on those. We can, we can dictate, to a certain extent, where the towers go. We can dictate what the towers look like. So for example, in a residential area, you're not going to have some big hot-dip galvanized metal pole that looks like a, like it belongs on the freeway. We can have them meet some design guidelines that would be a tapered, metal, fluted pole, more consistent with the light poles and things we see around the city. But our hands are, I don't want to say tied, but we're very limited, as is every municipality in the state of Ohio, on how much we can regulate these. So we're still working through those things as well. Anybody that has any questions should reach out to Lynn. I think she has the entire ordinance now memorized, committed to memory. I know she was working with Mr. Maestros on that as well. The next meeting, and we will swear our new members, will be April 1st. That will be here at 7:00 PM in City Hall, and anybody that would like to attend is encouraged to do so. Just a couple of quick notes on the Environmental Commission. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention it at every council meeting. I see Ms. Walker staring at me from the gallery there. We're going to be doing a kind of mini-street cleanup program here. We're going to start around Route 91 and head over by Haddon Road, Summit Street, and 91, kind of near CVS. Anybody that's interested in participating can reach out to Lisa at City Hall, and she can get your name and contact information on the list. Cleanup, right now, is tentatively slated for Saturday, April 6th, just a couple hours from 9:00 to 11:00, so if anybody's interested in helping out, or I know we'll also have community service hours if there's any students that want to volunteer. Anybody interested, again, just reach out to City Hall, name, phone number, we'll reach out to you, and just remember, dress accordingly, because that'll probably happen rain or shine. We're also looking for people that anyone knows that have done their best to better the city in terms of cleanup or picking up trash, or just any way that, you know, improving the environmental conditions. We'd like to recognize those residents at a council meeting. So anybody that's been doing this for five years or more, if you know of anybody, please reach out to me, Ms. Walker, or anybody on the Environmental Commission. Shredding Day, again, for all the residents, the free service is Saturday, September 14th at Public Works, and our next Environmental Commission meeting will be Tuesday, April 2nd, here in council chambers at 7:00 PM. I hope everybody has a terrific spring break, and that does it for me this evening, sir. Thank you.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Good evening. Public Works will meet on April 9th. Community Relations will meet Thursday, March 21st at the Chamber of Commerce House. And Twins Day met, I do have a report on the Twins Day Committee. They have their theme, the theme this year is "Home for the Holidays." With that, they are, they have a wonderful webpage, twinstays.org, where they've got a lot of the information regarding Twins Day. It is going, it is scheduled for August 20, or August 2nd, I'm sorry, August 2nd and 3rd this year, or 2nd to the 4th. Registration's open, so please visit the website. "Home for the Holidays" is a theme. They will meet again on April 3rd at 7:00 o'clock at the Twins Day office. And that's all I have.
Okay.
Oh, yes, you have a question?
When is the next safety meeting?
You know, I'm not on the Safety Committee.
Oh, I thought you were.
I'm on the, I'm on Public Works.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But Shannon's going to let us know.
The last one was cancelled, and I don't know that I have.
The last one we didn't have, we didn't have an agenda.
We didn't have an agenda.
I thought we passed it.
We just did.
We just did.
We did.
We just passed it. Was this supposed to be like?
I believe it'll be July.
Next one's July?
July 9th. And the Public Works Committee, that meeting is still set for April 9th, is that correct? Right.
Perhaps the best way to put it is it's coming up.
Eventually, right?
It'll be here before we know it.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. McPherson?
Everybody else has already announced the meetings that are coming up, so I really don't have anything else to add. But the friends up Twinsburg Parks did meet last night. There were six new members that had turned in their membership applications. The next meeting will be April 15th at AMM Restaurant. It's hard to say fast. Still working on their membership drive and some things for Earth Day. That's all I have.
How many members do they have?
There were 50 or so.
No, really, how many?
I think they had 50 last year.
Okay. I will be at the next Finance Committee meeting. None of the other committees have met within the last week. Now we're on to the mayor.
All right, thank you. Good evening. Nothing really from me tonight to report on, and actually, we only have one department have reported, so maybe if you want to come on up. We'll do two, actually. I'll let Sarah report. She's got good news to share.
I wanted to give everybody, good evening, council and mayor. I wanted to give everybody a quick update on construction, because the weather's starting to break. So we have work on the sanitary sewer on State Route 91, starting early in April, from Ravenna Road to Tinkers Creek. That work will be controlled by either a flagger or a temporary signal. They'll be employing either or, depending on what type of work they're doing on the day. We are still kind of waiting on Windstream to get out of our way, so we're hoping Windstream gets in there. State Route 91, the progress on that one, I know there were some questions on when the sidewalk on the east side of the road at the last meeting was going to get done, so giving an update, they've got a lot of, as you've driven by, they've got the base pretty much dug out, a lot of that stone back in, so there's no longer a big drop-off. Tomorrow, you'll see some of the portable concrete barrier disappearing and being replaced with drums from basically the existing roundabout to just south of the Meadowwood area. In terms of work over there, you'll see the setup for concrete curbs starting. They're surveying that out this week as well. We're hoping to have all those curbs in place, and we have word that the asphalt plants are scheduled right now to open April 15th. So we're hoping we'll have all the curbs done, everything pretty much ready to go, so the asphalt can get there as soon as possible, and hopefully, by the end of the month, we'll go into our next phase of construction. Our next phase will actually be going back to the east side, doing the curb over there that we skipped in order to get a lot of the work done that we could through the winter, as well as put in the sidewalk on that side, so that work will be coming in May. As far as work there, they'll also be working at the center of the roundabout, getting that center island. So when they do that work, like I said, the next phase will be occurring at the end of April, early May, and it will be closing down both Ethan's and Meadowwood while they work on that roundabout construction. That will take us into July, and I'll give updates as we progress from there. The other work going on with Spring Woods, still under construction, they've got most of their water line in. They'll be looking to pave that out in April and then starting a model home sometime shortly after that, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Sarah?
Good evening, council. Our March income tax receipts is a bit above $1.7 million, so we're up 19.4% from March of last year, where we were at 1.4. So total for the year, we're at 5.44. So total for the year, we're at 5.44. Last year, we were at 5.29, so we are up for the year at 2.95%. We have our permanent appropriations on third reading tonight. I just want to let you know that I do appreciate all the time and effort that Council put into reviewing every line item. There's a lot of work that goes into this budget before you ever see it. Our budget process starts in June, and you see our final product in sometime in September. There were about $5 million worth of reductions that happened before you guys ever saw anything. So I just want to thank our department heads that aren't here. Maybe they'll see this, and they work very closely with me and the Mayor to do the best that we possibly can for the city. And then finally, I want to let you guys know that I met with the Auditor of State yesterday, Keith Faber. It was very kind of him to visit all the areas and so early in his term. And I did discuss with him the performance audit because we're still on that waitlist. He knows that there's an issue there and they're looking to hire more staff. So hopefully I'll have some news for you soon.
All right, that's all we have this evening.
Okay. On to legislation versus Ordinance 182019.
The permanent appropriation ordinance for 2019 approved by Council from estimates submitted by the Mayor, providing for the ordinary expenses and other necessary expenses of the City of Twinsburg, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2019, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to declare Ordinance 182019 an emergency. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fury, seconds. The reason we need to do this as an emergency is we have to have a budget in place by the end of this month, and we won't be here next week. Okay. Any other discussion?
And if we didn't pass it on emergency, an ordinance takes 30 days to be approved, so it has to be by the end of the month. We also changed our process this year. In the past, we put a permanent budget in for January 1st, even though we could have gone to March 31st. So we spent, we took an extra quarter to review the numbers and see actually what we closed with to do this. But because of that, we need to put this on emergency at this time so that we can have it into the county by the 31st.
Any other discussion? Shannon, call the roll.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Okay. The emergency passes 7-0. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance 182019. Is there a second?
I have seconds.
Mr. Fury, seconds. Is there any discussion?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to run this by Council again one last time. If anybody had any questions or any discussion on the budget, as you know, the Finance Committee worked on it diligently the last few months. We had special sessions and, you know, Mr. Steele, Mr. Fury, and I sat there, and a lot of you attended those meetings as well, so I'm not discounting that. But we had many discussions, and we went over this budget time and time again, and we trimmed as much as we possibly could to bring out a budget that we feel that we can live with this year. So I was just wondering, as Mr. Fury just said, you know, it's important that this passes tonight because it has to be submitted by the end of the month, so, and this is our last meeting, so I just thought this is a perfect opportunity. If anybody has any questions or any comments before we go to a vote, I just want to throw that out there and make sure everybody had an opportunity to do so. Is there any questions or comments, I guess? Any further?
I think it's too late. I think this time it's too late, but with us up 3% over last year, we extrapolated that out as Sarah was somewhat conservative on her revenue, then be an extra 2.9 million, or $690,000 of revenue. And I've had this discussion with the others here, but for the last five years, we've only spent 93% to 94% of the budget. This is a budget, it's not a check, it's not a purchase order. We have allocated funds to be available to be spent. Not all of the funds get spent every year.
Right.
Some accounts go over and we transfer money in, as we did a lot last year, and we still finished at about 94% of what was projected from the beginning. If we finished at 95%, tighter than we did before, that's still a $2.6 million difference. It puts us extremely close to being as balanced as you want based off of a close, not a start. So unless we lay people off, there isn't a lot of things that we can do differently in here at this time. So, and I think we did a good job on this budget. We've had some criticisms on it, but I think we're in a good spot. I think there's also economic development growth that's going on at the city that's continued to take us from the, you know, 19% that we were at when we lost a quarter percent, or gave up to quarter percent. We didn't lose it. We gave it back on the agreement that we had with the residents, that if you gave us that money, when we didn't need it, we would give it back to you. And that's the biggest knock we got in the last major audit, was the red flag that our general funds going down primarily because of the lack of the decreased income tax. I think we did a good job. I believe that this is going to be a good year. I absolutely do. So that's my opinion.
Well put. Thanks.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Well, I just want to say that I appreciate all the work of the Finance Committee and the fact that we all participated. I think that, as Mr. Fury said, it's a budget, but we're going to be continuing to look at it, and I think that all, what I'm really impressed with is that all our employees are very conscious of the budget and will continue to be looking at where we're spending our money. So it's not that we're trying to be irresponsible, it's a big challenge, but I think that we've put forth a good, strong budget, and there's a lot of commitment to making sure we're spending the money where it needs to be spent.
One last thing, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, I didn't mean to leave you out of that. I know that you were in a lot of these meetings as well.
I was in all of them.
You were part of the discussions, and I know that you were part of the solution, not the problem, and we appreciate that. We appreciate your help as well.
Are we done? Shannon, call the roll.
Mr. Steele?
No.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Okay, ordinance 192019.
An ordinance accepting the proposal of Waste Management Incorporated, 6705 Richmond Road, Glenwill, Ohio 44139, for the refuse and recycling collection and disposal.
Okay. This is its third reading, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Ordinance 192019. Is there a second?
I have seconds.
Mr. Fury, seconds. Any discussion?
This is a three-year contract, a slight increase. We looked at possibly doing things differently in the city to get, to slow the rate of increase by changing what we do recycling into, you know, bi-monthly as opposed to weekly. But that was, we only saved us about $60,000 in confusion. We thought that we'd not do that, but we pay about $1.3 to $1.4 million a year to have a trash collected in the city. Thank you.
Okay, Shannon, call the roll.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Okay, next is Ordinance 202019.
An ordinance authorizing the sale at auction of certain personal property owned by the City of Twinsburg and no longer needed for municipal purposes.
Stands on its first reading. Next is?
Second.
Second reading, excuse me. Okay. Next is Resolution 302019.
A resolution in support of Issue 5, the 4 million renewal levy submitted to the voters by the Twinsburg City School District on May 7th, 2019, primary election ballot.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 302019. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. McFerrin, seconds. Any discussion?
You know I support it, but am I, do I vote on this, or do I need to? It's okay. I do.
It's a resolution in support of that. Certainly, as a resident, I understand you work for the school district, but as a resident, you certainly have an interest in this. Something that conflicts you out of that.
Okay, thank you. You know how I feel about this.
On the fact that it's a renewal.
It's a renewal.
It's not a new tax.
No, I think, you know, for me personally, and I've said this before in different meetings, all three of my kids were born in Twinsburg and have gone through the school district, and I'm very proud of where they're at today and what education they've received. And I would hope that Council supports this tonight as well as our community when this comes up for a vote.
Okay. As I stated, the last renewal that they came to us, I am concerned about the people that live in our city that are on fixed incomes. While this is not going to cause their taxes, property taxes, to go up, I am concerned about them. Plus, I'm concerned about the way we fund our schools with property taxes. Years ago, the Ohio Supreme Court voted against it and declared it unconstitutional. And then 20 years later, they decided to chicken out and they relinquished jurisdiction on it and basically said, punted it back to somebody to sue again to see if we could get it declared unconstitutional again. I realize this is not going to cause anybody's income taxes or property taxes to go up. I'm going to vote for it. So there we go. Shannon, call the roll.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Resolution 302019 passes 7-0. Okay. Next is Ordinance 312019.
An ordinance amending Section 155 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Twinsburg regarding the Glenn Eagles Advisory Board and declaring an emergency.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to declare Ordinance 312019 on emergency and place it on its third and final reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Bellin, seconds. Is there any discussion?
Recently, we're putting this on an emergency is because we're changing the structure of the board, and we're going to add four members, and we needed to put some additional slots into the way that the board's configured. So I'm putting us in there, emergency now. We'll be able to take the second resolution, the next resolution will add people to this committee. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Shannon, call the roll.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Ordinance 312019 passes 7-0.
It's the emergency.
Or the emergency clause passes 7-0, excuse me. Now I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance 312019. Is there a second? Mr. Bellin, seconds. Is there any discussion? Okay. I have the list of who we're moving in here.
That's the next of ordinance.
Okay. All right. No more discussion? Shannon, call the roll.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Okay. Ordinance 312019 passes 7-0. Next is Resolution 252019.
A resolution appointing four resident members to the Glenn Eagles Advisory Board.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 252019. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Bellin. We will be adding the names of Greg Ryle, Ronnie Johnson, Thomas Warner, and John MacArthur to the advisory board. Any others?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everybody once again who showed interest in the Gulf Advisory Board. We really did have some outstanding candidates, and these four that we're adding tonight are going to do a great job this next year, and I thank them in advance.
Shannon, please call the roll.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution passes 7-0. Next is Ordinance 322019.
An ordinance amending Section 155.01 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Twinsburg regarding the Environmental Commission and declaring an emergency.
I'd like to make a motion to declare Ordinance 322019 an emergency, place it on its third and final reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Barr. Is there any discussion?
The reason for the emergency is, again, we're changing the structure of the board to add some additional members. And I tell you, we had some outstanding interviews, PhDs, just really fantastic credentials that want to help the city. So if we're going to be added to the seat and it's on an emergency so that we can appoint them to the next resolution. Thank you.
Okay, Shannon, please call the roll.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Okay, the emergency passes 7-0. Now I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance 322019. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Barr, seconds. Any more discussion? Shannon, please call the roll.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance 322019 passes 7-0. Next, we're on to Resolution 242019.
A resolution appointing four members to the Environmental Commission.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 242019. Is there a second?
I'll make a second.
Mrs. Stoffer? Any further discussion? Okay, the names we're adding to the commission are Crystal Davis, Peter Plato, Virginia Smith,
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-four twenty nineteen passes seven zero. Next is ordinance thirty-three twenty nineteen.
An ordinance amending chapter five thirty-one of the codified ordinances of the city of Twinsburg regarding cigarette and tobacco vendors and declaring an emergency.
I'd like to make a motion to declare ordinance thirty-three twenty nineteen an emergency and place it on its third and final reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Barr?
Or Mr. Bellin. Sorry.
Is there any discussion? The reason for the emergency is, this allows for the joint enforcement of the chapter five thirty-one between the city of Twinsburg and the Summit County combined general health district, and they want, the health district wants to begin enforcement as soon as possible. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance thirty-three twenty nineteen. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Bellin, seconds.
I need to call the roll on the emergency.
Oh, I'm sorry. Shannon, call the roll on the emergency.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mrs. McPherson?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Okay, the emergency passes seven zero. Now I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance thirty-two twenty nineteen. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Barr, seconds. Any more discussion? Shannon, please Calderon.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance thirty-two twenty nineteen passes seven zero. Next, we're on to resolution twenty-four twenty nineteen.
A resolution appointing four members to the Environmental Commission.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-four twenty nineteen an emergency and place it on its third and final reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Bellin, seconds. Once again, we want to do this as emergency, this will allow us to, the city to join forces with the Summit County General Health District. Shannon Calderon, please.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Okay. The emergency clause, emergency pass is seven zero. Next, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance thirty-four twenty nineteen. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Bellin, seconds.
Yeah, just, just one other thing, you know, the Tobacco Twenty-One is something that we passed as a council a couple of months ago. You know, it has gotten, there are several other municipalities in Ohio that have passed it as well, and I know that there's a bill in the Texas Senate at the state level that they're discussing it as well, so this is kind of one of those things that, again, I feel very strongly about and I know it's going to, I think it's just a matter of time and it's been national as well.
Okay, Shannon, please Calderon.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Bellin?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance thirty-four twenty nineteen passes seven zero. Next, we move on to unfinished business, new business and miscellaneous. Yes, sir, Mr. Bellin.
Just have one thing, I, I wanted to say happy birthday to my son, Crew. He'll be eleven next week. Also, I wanted to wish everybody a restful and enjoyable spring break, and for those that are traveling, very safe travels.
Mr. Scafidi?
I have nothing further.
Mr. Fury?
Nothing further this evening, thank you.
I have two things. Well, maybe three things. So at caucus, I brought up the fact that there's a Sunshine Protection Act of twenty nineteen that's being proposed at different states as well as in the Senate and the House of Representatives, and this would allow for a permanent daylight savings time. We were all in agreement of putting together a resolution of support for that act. The second thing I wanted to say is I'm a little concerned and disappointed that it was referred that we don't consider or are insensitive to our residents on fixed incomes in regards to the school budget. I think that we are, and as we've talked about, the renewal is not an increase and we are just supporting the schools in this. Property values do remain strong when there's good schools. Twinsburg has been in a seller's market for over three years. People move here because of the schools. We've had more demand for homes in Twinsburg than we had supply and prices are going up. It all works together, and we need strong, smart students to enter the workforce. And I think the schools are doing a great job. They have an academy where, I think, more, Mrs. Stoffer can talk more about what they're doing, to help students get into trades, and I think we've got a very innovative school system that we should support. And the only other thing, my third thing is, I wish everybody a wonderful spring break.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Thank you. I have nothing further this evening.
Mr. Barr?
Just one quick thing. My father's birthday is tomorrow. I'm not allowed to say how old he is, but it's also the first day of spring.
That's true.
So, there is light at the end of the tunnel, at least as far as the seasons are concerned. That's all I have this evening.
Good to have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I want to wish everybody a safe, healthy spring break. All you kids out there, enjoy that week. I have nothing else. Anybody have anything else they'd like to add?
The mayor and the law director.
Yep. Mayor?
Yeah, I've just got to make a few comments. You know, the budget process is a long tedious process, and I guess I'm trying to figure out at what point Mr. Steele became concerned about a balanced budget. I went back to two thousand sixteen when, when I came on. In two thousand fifteen, as mayor, we had a budget, however, we did make some changes to that budget, and it was primarily focused on, over time, there were some things we were, we were concerned about that we tried to curb at the two thousand sixteen budget. Mr. Steele was on the Finance Committee at that point and had no comments or concerns regarding that budget. It was voted unanimous in February of two thousand sixteen, and then later that year, we moved into the two thousand seventeen budget. And as I looked through those minutes, we, we took time in the Finance Committee, which Mr. Steele was on, worked through, and there were several comments that he made questions to fire travel and to police vehicles, a piece of equipment for the golf course, but overall, the budget was talked about and it was approved, and our finance director at the time asked unanimously at one of the meetings, is there any questions or concerns regarding this budget? I'd like to see it on the agenda tonight, and there were none. So, we have two thousand sixteen budget and the two thousand seventeen budget, which was actually approved before year end in December of two thousand seventeen. And then we move on to two thousand eighteen budget. Mr. Steele, again, was on the Finance Committee for the two thousand eighteen budget. We had three budget meetings. We had an August mid-year review. The one thing that, that I found in the minutes that Mr. Steele wanted to remove was a necessary vehicle for the fire department. He actually did a motion to remove it. It was, it wasn't successful. But throughout the year and through the whole budget process, there were no recommendations on where that budget was going to be, and we all knew it was going to be a deficit budget. We had a deficit budget we walked into in sixteen. We passed one unanimously that Mr. Steele was part of in seventeen. We worked on eighteen's budget, which again, passed in November of that year earlier than it ever had before with another unanimous vote. And then we worked our way into now two thousand nineteenth budget, which in my four years has been the longest budget that we've, process that we've been through. We had approximately seventeen meetings with department heads prior to presenting the budget to council. Over five million dollars, as you said, was cut before council got it. Council got it in September of two thousand eighteen. And so, there was multiple capital improvement board meetings, and there was nine meetings held in two thousand eighteen of the Finance Committee. Mr. Steele was not on the Finance Committee in two thousand eighteen. He came to five of the nine meetings. There was three important ones that were missed, though. There was our five-year revenue projection that was done by our finance director, and then the two long lengthy meetings that were the department heads going through their individual budgets with the finance department. Most of council were there for, for all of it. And so, a lot of work went into early on in the year on this particular budget that was presented tonight. The one thing that I can't understand is, there was additional meetings in two thousand nineteen, which Mr. Steele then appointed himself back onto the Finance Committee. There were four meetings.